Good evening. The June first, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the West Springfield Planning Board is hereby called to order at six P M. In accordance with M G L, chapter thirty A must announce that anyone intending to tape the meeting must identify themselves to the clerk and provide his or her name and address for the record. And we inform those present that any document that is to be considered or discussed must be made part of the record of the meeting and the original or copy must be submitted to the committee before there will be any discussion regarding that document. Documents include photos, plans, drawings, computer printouts and simulation, video presentations and the like, as well as letters and written material. Six P M. Mayor Reichel, councilors Power, Powers, Smith and Laflambeau. Uh, the hearing is to consider a petition for a zoning ordinance amendment to the following sections of the zoning ordinance. Three hundred dash two point one terms defined by amending and adding definitions related to the medical and adult use of marijuana. Three hundred five point three, table five dash two, table of use regulations, business districts and table five three, table of use regulations, industrial districts by adding the use marijuana retail store. As allowed by planning board special permit in the business A, business B, industrial, industrial park and industrial production facility as allowed by planning board special permit in the business B, business B one and industrial one zoning districts. Three hundred dash eight point eight registered marijuana dispensaries and off-site medical marijuana dispensaries and three hundred dash eight point one zero non-medical marijuana establishments by deleting and replacing with the new section titled three hundred dash eight point eight marijuana uses included in regulations for the medical and adult, adult use of marijuana. Is that you? It's all yours, buddy.
What am I?
Floor is yours.
So for the first time ever.
Yourself, name and address for the record.
Sorry, uh, Mayor Reichel, twenty-four Autumn Road. So for the first time, I made a PowerPoint today.
This is gonna work?
I don't know. This was one of the, uh, prepackaged PowerPoints on, on Google, so. Bear with me, I did test it out, it's up there on, on the thing, it's kinda cool, so we'll see how it goes. Uh, so, I'm gonna take this in three parts. One, uh, being why bring this back up now, I know we talked about this back in two thousand and eighteen, you should have it right on your little computer thing there. I thought about doing green, but it was already orange. And I thought green was like a little much. I don't know what's in the way of this screen, hopefully. It's like this thing right there isn't, that thing is in the way.
Yeah, that little light and the little stringy there.
Yeah, the good thing is like, it wasn't me, my PowerPoint worked well.
Oh, yeah.
Aren't you in charge of all this stuff around here?
Yeah, we did replace it, this is the first time ever, I had to call I T down to figure out how to do all this.
Great job. Uh, we can see that one. We're good.
You see it there.
Yeah, we.
Is that what people at home see?
Yes.
Okay. So, I apologize for the technology issues. Uh, take this in three parts, the first being why bring it back up, the first being kind of what we see as a change in public support and then the proposed ordinance, we'll talk a little bit about that at the end. Uh, so, actually, I got my slide for this. So why are we bringing it back up now? For one, I think we're four years overdue, I think we missed a great opportunity back in two thousand and eighteen, especially seeing what's happened over the past four years. Uh, but why we're bringing it back now is four years has passed. Every, well, not every community, Agwam hasn't yet, but I've talked to them and they're looking into this too to see how it goes here. Uh, the other cities around us have open stores. All the negative that was talked about twenty-eight, four years ago back in two thousand and eighteen, none of that happened, there's no marijuana zombies wander around these towns. The only town that really saw a lot of traffic was Northampton when Neta opened back in the fall of two thousand and eighteen, only because that was the only store that was open in Western Massachusetts at the time. Um, so they had a ton of people back then, there were lines everywhere. Uh, their police were very happy because they got paid overtime details, but that has dissipated because Northampton itself is more than one store now. And as I mentioned, the other cities around us have stores. Not all the towns, some of the towns, most of the towns probably across the state still don't allow it. Uh, but towns that do, Lee, for example, pays the city of Lee, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars a quarter in their revenue that they make from them, so. They're different, we're not gonna be like that, I don't want you to think that we're gonna make that kinda money, but they're different in that they're right off the Mass Pike, close to New York, and they also serve pretty much all of Berkshire until you get to Pittsfield. So, again, why bring it back now? Ever since two thousand and sixteen, the support for legalization of recreational marijuana has increased uh, from about a low of just below sixty percent back in two thousand and sixteen, up to close to seventy percent now in two thousand and twenty-two. Um, and we'll get to a little bit of that later, but I do think we kinda missed the boat, but it doesn't, it's not a big deal because for us, uh, we are the crossroads of New England, we have ninety, ninety-one that intersects right on Riverdale Road, there's a reason Riverdale is the retail capital of Western Mass because it's very easy, as we all know, we live in West Side, very easy to get to, uh, very easy to travel to, Riverdale has everything. Uh, Memorial itself, West Springfield is very close to everything, so having retail here in West Springfield, I think we can still benefit from the opportunity of having the dispensaries here, people are still gonna come here. In the long term, when people are starting to make the decisions about where they go shopping, whether they do it just once on a Sunday or on the weekend. You know, we have Town and Country, we have Co- or Table and Vine, we have Coscos, probably two by volume, some of the biggest liquor stores in Western Mass on Riverdale. When people are going to the grocery store, or they're going to Dick's, or they're going to Staples, and they wanna pop in and grab a six pack, or they wanna grab an edible, they're gonna go to make those, begin to make those decisions of where these places are, and if we're not on the map for that, in the long run, and I'm not gonna say this happened in the past, in the, the next five or ten years, but in the long run, we're gonna lose out on those opportunities if we're not serving everyone's needs and to think that people aren't in West Springfield using marijuana at all because it's illegal here is foolish. There's stores in the area that see seven hundred plus customers a month from our community. And that, that's not even taken into account what we could pull from Agwam because they're not there yet. And they're going outside of the community and they're getting their marijuana, they're getting their edibles pre-rolled, they're getting their flour there, and they're coming back and consuming it here in West Springfield. And now, you can get deliveries to West Springfield, but the taxes go back to the servicing community, so let's say I order from Westfield, I order from Insa right across the bridge, Insa's right across the bridge at the old Lux Burger. I can get it delivered to my house, but the taxes are gonna go back to Springfield, they're not gonna come to West Springfield, so. A lot of the negative that we heard about back in two thousand and eighteen, for one, never happened in any of these communities. And two, it's still here. We're just not making any revenue on it, I don't wanna say it's all about money, but it's also about serving our residents, there's residents here that wanna partake in this, just like there are that go to the twelve liquor stores we have throughout the community and countless bars. Uh, so that's kinda why I wanna bring it back, I would have liked to bring it back sooner, but I do, with the council that we have, have talked to many of them and have more support now uh, to bring this back, to look at it with a kind of a new lens, and especially to see over the past four years, it would've been harder in the past couple, but four years of experience in not just Northampton, but the surrounding communities as well really shows that the fears that we reasonably had back in, in early two thousand and sixteen and in up to two thousand and eighteen didn't come to pass. So this is two maps, and this is why I created a PowerPoint, cuz the visuals I thought were kinda cool. So, on the left is a map of how many states were legalized recreational marijuana back in two thousand and sixteen, and on the right, uh, we have two thousand and twenty-two. Well, as I've, it's not really up today because Rhode Island just legalized it as well, so. On the left, back in two thousand and sixteen, when Massachusetts voted for it, uh, there were, we became one of the eleven states to legalize it across the country. Um, and I think there were, yeah, twenty states allowed medical at the time. Now we have nineteen states with Rhode Island just did it last week that have allowed uh, recreational, the last one remaining in New England is New Hampshire, and there's seven states that have ballot questions pending this year. And so Rhode Island, for example, did it by legislation, it wasn't a ballot question, so some more states could come into play depending on how things work out. But we're pushing, there are more than half of the country within the next couple of years will have allowed recreational marijuana at some point, especially the most populous states. So we did. Things better, worse? So we did, uh, Zen City is a company that we use just to do social media aggregation, and they bought a survey company at the beginning of the year, so to kinda get a better sense of how folks felt in West Side, we hired them to do a survey for us, a bunch of surveys, there was one on general government, there was some on uh, fields, but cannabis, we did this leading into these hearings. Uh, they conducted a survey for us, they did it through, they, about a thousand people responded, so about a quarter of the people that voted in the last election, they're about, just under four thousand people voted in the last municipal election. Uh, about a thousand people responded, it was available. Uh, I put it out through social media, it was available on the record on our website, and then they do like targeted ads, I don't know how it all works. Uh, but when it shows up on your phone or you're scrolling through a website, it'll show up and like, oh, are you a resident of West Side? And you click yes, and then it goes into a survey, if you wanna answer it, you can answer it. So overall, oh, this is kinda hard to see, oh, it's easier to see there. Overall, it's just under seventy percent, support legalization, similar for research labs, a little bit, a couple percentage points less for uh, retail and a percentage point or so less for cultivation. Um, which generally tracks the trends that, that Gallup polls have done across the country from two thousand and sixteen and before, they've been doing it forever, to now, where across the country, last year they did a poll in November, that's when they pu- uh, published it, it was at sixty-eight percent of the folks across the country buy their polling, support legalization. Uh, some of the priorities, uh, and concerns, we have some open-ended questions we'll get to in a second. Uh, but one is keeping away from kids, that's always been something we've heard, is how this is gonna impact kids. Uh, crime and sa- and what the impact on crime will be. And then again, creating jobs and, uh, impaired driving, and, you know, and, and some of this stuff, um, I completely understand, some of it is, you know, it is legal now, so the impaired driving thing, they, they do need to figure that out and how you can, just unlike, um, alcohol, which you can do a uh, breathalyzer on the side of the road, they don't have that technology yet, uh, for marijuana. But at the same time, it doesn't stop it from being sold or being consumed, you know, hopefully people are, are using it responsibly. Um, but keeping that in mind, regardless of that, it's still being consumed here in town. But those are the, some of the top concerns and priorities, and then overall, about, like I mentioned, a thousand people responded, and it's a running around sixty-five to seventy percent. So this is one of the open-ended questions. Three hundred and fifty, you see that N thing, statistics, three hundred and fifty people responded to this. And again, it's, well, it's easier to see on this one. Um, what should the town prioritize when they're making these decisions? The economic benefit from the community, a lot of responses where we aren't, people are, we know people are leaving to go other places, we're losing out on that. Location of stores, uh, safety of, of users and residents, and again, safety comes into it, keeping away from kids under the influence, driving under the influence and keeping jobs local. And a lot of the comments were around, um, understanding that it's happening and wanting to benefit from the tax revenue, but also making sure that it fits in the community as well. Another question was where, like prioritize, this was a, not open-ended, this was a multiple choice question, prioritize where it should be in the community. Uh, the top one was in light industrial business. The next was on main streets with mixed commercial users, next, that was a thirty-six, thirty-four percent in commercial areas and major roadways, so like Riverdale or Memorial was thirty-three percent, shopping centers, uh, central areas like downtown and small scale and commercial neighborhoods. So this is, we're gonna get to the ordinance, it's very similar to what we did in two thousand and eighteen. The only thing we did is back in two thousand and eighteen, we limited it to pretty much only industrial. Now, that was a two thousand and eighteen thing, again, back before we knew what was going on, what the impacts would be and uh, how the communities could handle it. It's not two thousand and eighteen anymore, we saw that none of these negatives actually happened, there wasn't, I mean, again, besides Northampton, these massive traffic influxes, um. People go, they pe- treat it just like a liquor store, you go, you leave, you know what you're getting for, you can order online, you walk in and pick it up. There's not these huge impacts that we thought there would be, you can't use it on site, you get in your car and leave. So, we moved it to, and again, looking at us being the retail capital of Western Mass, of the region, we looked at moving it to the business corridors, the business districts, all but neighborhood business, we kept it on neighborhood business, which is basically just the country store and the top of Westfield Street where Sorento's is. Um, other businesses, other business districts it could locate in. And it would still have to be five hundred feet away from schools, playgrounds, fields, anywhere kids are gonna be. But again, this would also, when people are coming into us, before they even get to us, they need to have all their approvals lined up at the state level too, which is a seven-figure-ish deal to do, so you're not gonna get someone in that's a fly-by-nighter. Where on liquor stores, you couldn't, I mean, liquor stores, there's pretty much no requirements where you can be. Um, you can have advertising all outside your building, for wh- y- going into one of these stores is vastly different from going into a liquor store. Um, I have pictures coming up next, I think, yeah, so this is my last slide, only ten slides. Uh, but this is what these places look like, these are all local. Um, I actually just went to Cannabis Connection as a consumer to figure out what it was like, I've been there before on tours uh, as the mayor, but I never just kinda walked in without anyone knowing who I was. You walk in, you have to, you s- you're stopped in a room as you get in, you have to give your I D, they scan your I D, they ask you what you're doing here. Uh, you go in and look around, if you wanna buy something, when you do that, they scan your I D again, and you pay and leave. Um, there was a handful of people there when I was there this afternoon. Um, not a huge traffic line, not a negative impact, I didn't see anyone around smoking outside, I mean, they got cameras everywhere, so you probably couldn't anyways. Um. Talking to my colleagues, not only in Western Mass, but across the state, there's very little negative about this, everyone, I was just at an event saying I gotta run back for a cannabis hearing, and they're like, oh, I hope you get that tax revenue, like, they understand the value that's there now. Uh, and the lack of, the lack of the fear and the negatives that were gonna happen, and again, I mentioned, I understand that back in two thousand and eighteen, when I was making this same proposal back then in front of the council, a lot of the comparables I was using were in Colorado and California, and it's very hard, like, I read a ton of stuff, I became an expert on it back then. Uh, but it's very hard to, having these serious concerns, legitimate concerns, hear me say it's all gonna be okay when we're essentially first to market or first mover back then. We're not anymore, it's been four years, we've seen, and Affinity is in West Springfield. Um, on circuit, circuit draw, circuit Ave. Uh, they're not a recreational, they're a medical. Um, but the rest of those are all recreational, the two Nettas, or the Neta is in Northampton, as I mentioned, Cannabis Connection, it's in Westfield, right off, uh, Mass Pike, and the Insa's in Northampton, or East Hampton, and right across the bridge, the top one on the left is at the old Lux Burger. So, if you, I encourage you, um, anyone that's watching to, you don't need to even buy anything if you wanna go in and just check it out, but to drive by to check it out, to see what these places are actually like, and understand that for one, marijuana's already in West Springfield, it's been in West Springfield probably since we became a city back in seventeen seventy-four. Uh, it's here to stay, generally. It's not going anywhere. Um, as I mentioned, the wave of legalization is increasing. Uh, there's very few states, large populous states left that aren't at least discussing, if not regular recreational, at least medical, at some stage, or at least the decriminalization, every start seems, every state seems to start in the same way. Decriminalization, medical, and then legal, there are a couple states that kinda skipped medical and went definitely right to recreational. Um, but it is certainly a trend. And I look at it as an opportunity for us to be involved in the market, use our location, which we benefit from very much, uh, and provide for our residents that one, either wanna use it, if you don't wanna use it, you're gonna have no, it, if we allowed it and stores open like that, if you didn't like it, there would be no impact on your lifestyle, there would be no impact on your life. If you wanna partake in it and buy, it's easier for you to drive to the easiest spot to get to in Western Mass. But with that, I'm happy to open up to the public and answer any questions you may have.
So, I, I got a couple comments, I mean, back then, I gotta tell you, I was unsure. Took a lot of heat from a lot of people. And I just looked at it from a financial standpoint back then, and I said, you know what, we, we should do it, I was for it then. Um, since then, I went to take a tour of the place, and I pulled in the parking lot, and I pulled up my shirt and I put my head down cuz I knew there was cameras, I didn't want anybody to see me walking in. So I, I go in, I go in the place to do a tour, I was blown away. Not only was it beautiful, I seen a teacher from West Springfield in there, I saw a relative of mine in there, and every other walk of life in there, and that just opened my eyes. Here we are worried about kids getting it, we got teachers in there from West Springfield in another town, one, I can't say teachers, teacher, in there buying it, so, again, it's, it's, whoever's hands it gets into is, is responsible to make sure it doesn't get somewhere else, no different than alcohol or anything else. Along with that being said, from a medical standpoint, been paying attention to it, and I can say three very close people, including myself with arthritis, putting the stuff on your hands, and another relative that has sleep issues that started to use it and hasn't slept a full night in several years, it's working for them. And another one with anxiety, so three real close people are using it. So to see the benefits, um, it's kinda eye-opening. I can't say I've heard stories negative, you know, there's always gonna be something, whether it's drunken driving or impaired driving. But I could tell you, over the last few years that I've watched, I have a, a much, again, I was for it then, but only for the money. Um, now I, I see some pretty good benefits medically, and I want the money in the town. I'm tired of paying taxes, but that's just my two cents for now, and, uh.
Well, there's just to hop on that too. I have heard a lot of that as well, I've heard a lot from people that I didn't expect, not because I'm younger and I've been around it maybe longer. Uh, but a lot of people now, because it's legal and because there's, it's not just you're buying flour and, and smoking a bowl, it's they have it in all kinds of different uses, that people are like, yeah, like, I use it, I take an edible to help me sleep at night, people that are older than everyone on this board, who I didn't expect would have said that to me. But I think, because one, having it be recreationally illegal takes part of that stigma away, now, there's still stigma, uh, but takes part of that away, and at the same time, like, folks might say, well, medical's available and you just get a medical card, well, you can, but there's people that have jobs that would disqualify them for that because it is still federally legal, and I don't see the feds making a move in this anytime soon because they are making so much money because you can't deduct cost of goods sold, so they're making a ton of money on this, so there's no incentive for them to do it yet. So to have that option available for people when it's already recreationally available, and that, there really is less of that stigma now, and I've talked to more people that I wouldn't expect. And maybe that's partly me discriminating too, I don't know, but it, it just, in the conversations, it's surprising.
And, and I did forget one, there's four, there's another close friend of mine.
Know everyone that you know that uses marijuana.
In, in the old, older generation, that bakes cookies and keeps them in the refrigerator and i- it's amazing, it's, when, the more you talk about it, i- it's surprising, uh, who you know that participates, Sue.
I do have a, just a couple of questions, but I comment. Um, you did mention the revenue that comes from Lee, do you know what some of the revenue is around locally? I did speak to the chair of the board, Mr. Corellis, uh, for Westfield, and he just said it will blow your mind. So, that doesn't tell me what it is though, but I, I'm sure that it is gonna be a lot of money.
Um, I, these two guys are from Cannabis Connection tonight, and they wanna mention how much the revenue is, they showed me their books a while ago, and they're paying the city of Westfield two grand a day. I don't know if I can say that publicly, but. And. Come use that.
You gotta come up and, and, uh, state your name and address for the record.
Kirk Kazonis, uh, forty-two Gary Drive, Westfield, Mass. You asked about the revenues for Westfield, I can only speak to the local option tax, which is three percent of our, of our net sales, and it was between eight and nine hundred thousand dollars for the year. They have not collected any host community fees cuz they're still trying to figure out from the state attorney general what they can charge us because it is actually a community impact fee. So just local option tax was between eight and nine hundred thousand dollars for, for last year. That answers your question.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Sue.
And I don't know if I'm reading this correctly, so I apologize. This isn't for, like, outdoor growing, this is for only indoor growing, correct?
Correct. Yeah, there's so.
No outdoor growing.
Correct, well, I mean, if, I could, you could grow a couple plants outside, I think it's six plants per person.
Have an outgrow, outdoor growing facility.
So I didn't attach the, the state regs, Al- Allison, or I can send them to you tomorrow. There's a ton of state regs that require, that go through all the security requirements for all these facilities. Everything has to be, if we're, if it's, if we do a grow facility, and I think that would've been more likely in two thousand and eighteen versus now, just because we have so few. Back then, you had to have your own grow, you had to have all kinds of different stuff that, that has changed in four years. I think there's very few parcels, maybe over on Front Street, that they would have enough square footage to grow, but there's a ton of security requirements that you have to do, everything has to be inside. Um, camera and all that, but yeah, you can't do anything outside, you, you wouldn't be like it in the movies where you walk upon a field of marijuana plants, it was, wouldn't be able to do that.
So just to add, it's, uh, in our regulations that are proposed here, it's three hundred dash eight point eight, uh, B four, um, requires that a retail store or production facility, which includes cultivation, uh, shall be conducted within a permanent building, and it can't be in a temporary or mobile facility, um, and it can't be outside.
Previously, as everyone knows, I was definitely a no, and I came in here very open-minded because I did do a lot of research. And where Frank went inside a facility, I was told, just sit outside of one. See who goes in there, it's not the hippies that you think it is. So today during my lunch, I did. And the person was correct, it was, um, actually, it was a lot of, I'm gonna say, more elderly, which surprised me. Um, there was a gentleman walking in in a suit.
That's what hippies look like.
Now, yeah.
So I was definitely, um, surprised at, at seeing the people that go in. And I did do my due diligence, I talked to a lot of people, I met with Allison and, and, um, I still don't know where I stand right now, I'm still gonna listen, but I did do, um, a lot of research, and it isn't the hippies, like, I had in my head, you know, going down.
Even I was surprised when I went into a couple, right, right when they first opened, to see the, the wide-ranging demographics that, that came in. And I think part of that was, to, to Frank's point too, that now, now it's legal, there's less of that stigma, like, people that might have either made brownies or bought regular flour or grown their own aren't gonna talk to us about it cuz they don't know if, like, we're in the group, and they don't wanna be stigmatized on that. But now that it's legal, it's like, well, I can just go in and buy it, like, with everyone else, so.
Now, we have a medical facility, and I heard that if they wanted to sell retail, they could go to the state and ask for it, and they didn't have to tell us, is that true?
No.
It is, it's, sorry.
Really?
Uh, yeah, so if they were licensed by the state for medical before, I think, January first of two thousand and seventeen, um, they, the way the, uh, l- law was written is that we cannot prevent them from having retail sales.
And then we wouldn't get any revenue if they did that because they went directly to the state, correct? I did homework.
Well, so I think if we adopt the local option tax, we, we would still be able to collect that.
Bev?
Well, um, there's a couple of things that, I mean, it's all, this all sounds so great, right? That we're gonna get all this tax money, and boy, you know. The, I don't care about the consumer, I mean, I, I see who they are, I don't, I mean, hippie, uh, guy in a business suit, it's a, none of that makes any difference to me. What interests me is the five hundred feet from schools.
Hmm.
Um, just knowing, you know, I had Jay look up for me, um, how many feet in a mile? Five thousand two hundred and eighty feet.
Hmm.
And then I see, you know, we're talking about protecting children from, uh, drug use in West Springfield. And then I see that there's a, uh, is something, I, I thought I saw something that said a minimum of five hundred feet from schools.
Hmm.
Can you tell me, is, is that the standard, I mean, I'd, I'd prefer that it be a mile from a school building, or?
I mean, I think the five hundred was roughly around what we used last time, what most communities use.
It's what the state has established as the.
Yeah, the original.
And so the, the state has established it, so if you don't set any requirement, that's the automatic, is five hundred. They do give communities the op- option of having a zero foot, but you have to be explicit that it's zero or any, any number less than five hundred or, or more. But if, if your ordinance is silent on the matter, the state automatically imposes a five hundred foot separation.
Is, is, does, uh, package storage have a?
No.
So it can go right next to a school? Wow. Wow, go ahead, Bev.
Um, so would that be something that we would try and like, could we determine how far away from a school building? We would be consider putting the facility?
I mean, we can, if you, you have a different recommendation, you can certainly make it. I think five hundred is enough, only in that like you, no school kids walk into this building and, and get anything. I mean, a school kid might walk into a liquor store and pull a fast one on someone and, and buy booze. Uh, but they're not getting in there without an ID and getting it scanned. They're not walking up to someone on the outside and asking them to buy weed for them. That stuff's not happening. So I mean, if there's, if there's more, I'd like to know why. Because schools and athletic fields, I mean, they're all kind of over placed throughout town. Whereas like the business districts are mostly away from residences. Schools like the charter school, the charter schools in the residential neighborhood on Main Street. Um, but fields and, and daycares, that stuff kind of pops up all over the place. And then you set the really limit where places can go and it gets less competitive. And there's less likely, I mean, we want one that's gonna come and, and be in a business corridor and stay there. But if there's a field or something that qualifies one of the playgrounds and they're bumped out. But again, I, I looked at it as making it as allowable as a liquor store. Because personally, I think, and the data shows, this is less harmful than alcohol. By alcohol, we have no rules on.
It's probably also fairly safe to say that if a high school student wants to buy some flower, they're going to buy it at.
They already know where to get it.
Uh, you know, I was, I was in favor of it at the beginning, four years ago. I, uh, my reservations, which don't have anything to do with this, really, my problem with it is just people driving under the influence and not having a way to test for that. This ordinance and, I mean, there's nothing we can do about that and that's already occurring, regardless of what we choose to do here. I feel like we just missed the boat in Westside. We just handed a bunch of money to other abutting.
To Westfield?
To, yeah, right. And um, and also, I mean, to the people who live here. I mean, it's, it's pretty crazy that we sometimes, I mean, like, I remember the, whether it was at the council meeting or discussions we had here, a lot of the irrational negative beliefs that were being tossed around about like kids going in and people being stoned outside and like, none of it came to fruition. I didn't even see a possibility where that would be happening anyway, because it would never be tolerated on any level. It'd be in everybody's, it, it'd be against everybody's best wishes. The business owner, the community, everybody would, would, would nip that right away. I also prefer this much better than what I think was going to get passed if we did it then too. I wish it came a little bit quicker than four years, but we'll take it. Because I think if we're going to put a business like this, you don't want to put them at a competitive disadvantage anymore so than necessary, right? And when you have something like the one right in Springfield, right off the highway, kind of over there. Well, you kind of want them accessible. You don't want them stuffed in some industrial park somewhere because, because it's, that's not going to help the business. And we want the business to succeed as well. Because otherwise, what's the point of any of it? Um, so I don't know.
Well, you don't want your industrial zones to be dumping grounds for businesses you're not really a fan of. You want them to be there to make sure that they are doing what they are. Like you look at Agewalt has a massive industrial park and kudos to them.
I wish we had one.
Want to make sure, I do too. Uh, but I wish, but you want to make sure that those buildings are available for those businesses that, that come and bring jobs. And that retail space is available for retail. And like to the, your point of, I kind of understood where people were coming from. I mean, I'd be involved in, on behalf of the planning board to the Potter Valley Planning Commission, when I was on the planning board, I was their, the rep from the board to the commission back when we were going through the whole medical marijuana process. And that took a long time. Uh, originally voted for in twenty twelve and I don't think regs really came out until almost twenty fourteen. Um, so I guess that's two years, so probably similar to, to recreational. Uh, but I was involved in a lot of those debates around how the rules were being formed and what was safe and what was not safe and all. So I understood kind of like where, I had a better understanding of what the state was going to expect of recreational, based on what they did for medical. And medical was going to be much more difficult to get because you had a card to begin with. There wasn't anyone else off the street. So I get it, but I do think, agree with you that, you know, we've come to a point where the, the fear that we thought was going to happen has never come to exist. And, you know, maybe it did with Neta when Neta first opened and there was a ton of traffic. But again, that was the only one. And that was probably the, from talking to folks even in Northampton, the only real negative was all this traffic. And they got a new roundabout out of it, so.
Exactly. And I, I don't know how many they have there, but I was driving through, o- over the weekend. I mean, I don't know what the number is, but I feel like they're all over the place there.
Yeah, off the top of my head, I'm not sure. I think there's at least four in East Hampton. I'm not sure about Northampton. They, they're opening, uh, another one this summer was opening Ignite, I think it was called, off of the rotary, the new rotary they built, uh, by the Coolidge Bridge. But yeah, I mean, and, and you don't want too many in a sense, because I mean, you want, make people, they want to make sure you get some good local people that are going to come invest in the community and not just get bought out by some massive place and leave. Because as we all know, local business gives back. Um, but you also want to have so many that you have too many and then they end up closing or, or eating each. I mean, it was different back then too, because back in twenty eighteen, mass was the only state that was legal really. And was legal and ready to go. Where now, most of New England and New Hampshire is the only one left really. And it's probably only a matter of time until they become legal as well.
I'm, I'm trying to scan this. I thought I read, when I first read this, that, that this would, this would only be approved with a favorable vote for a special permit coming in front of the planning board for any to come to town.
Everything would come back to you guys.
That is correct.
Yeah. Everything would have to come back to you with a favorably negotiated host community agreement from my office and then approval by special permit from all of you.
I like it, good presentation.
Thank you. I'm glad you liked my first PowerPoint.
I got, I, a couple of comments. I think, one, you know, no matter what the subject is, whether it's this or in the past, something else. Depending on what side you're on, you can find information to support your, you know, whether it's negative or positive. If you're, if you're against this, you could do all kinds of research and find things, um, that have happened that are negative. And if you're for it, you can do the same. So I think, you know, one of the things I look at is if, when we did this the first time, like there was standing room only in a lot of these meetings. There was people going nuts. There was phone calls, there was, and I'm looking at it now, whether they're, whether they're out there positive or negative is irrelevant. There's that many less people here, so obviously something's changed, you know?
Uh, as I mentioned, the, the, the direction of just national approval is increasing. And for your example, back in, in twenty eighteen, Colorado, when they first legalized, saw like a two hundred percent increase in hospitalizations for marijuana. And when you dig into that, it's because before, no one either went to the hospital or they didn't classify it as under the influence of marijuana, it was just under the influence of a, a legal drug. So when you build, take that data out, then it's like, oh, well, the hospitalizations really, they increased a little bit because now it's more available and people are taking edible that they didn't really understand what it was going to do to them and freaked out. But no one has an overdose death related to marijuana, it doesn't exist. So when you look at that digging and really digging, like, oh yeah, that could be crazy. And then, okay, it, it, that makes sense and aligns with the rest of the data and it's, it's okay. But to your point, yeah, there's, I mean, statistics are great, but you can have something to support any side of whatever argument you want to make. Thank you.
You can grab a seat. Anybody in the audience have any comments, questions? Name and address for the record and.
Gordon Durfee, ninety Riverdale.
This is a really good presentation, Will. Really good. On the other hand, you forgot the medical stuff. I think that you're going to find, what I see, if you look at it through a medical perspective. And that is that over long-term use, let's face it, this stuff is cumulative. It doesn't have an overdose now, usually. But long-term, you're not helping people. Couple of studies, long-term cannabis use linked to dementia risk factors. Long-term cannabis users, people who have used cannabis eighteen, not from eighteen to nineteen years old and continued use through midlife showed cognitive deficits compared with non-users. Cognitive deficits, deficits were confined to cannabis users. Peep, let me see if I can get this, here it is, what he, he spoke about the alcohol problem. They also showed more cognitive deficit, deficits compared with long-term alcohol users and long-term tobacco users. So it is a drug. And here's another one that's, that says, long-term cannabis use linked to dementia risk factors. Oh, sorry, next page. Two pages. Chronic marijuana use linked to recurrent stroke. Oh yeah, we're getting older, folks. I turned down marijuana when I was nineteen, sixty years ago. Still turning it down because it's a drug. But if a doctor feels that it's useful, then I agree with it. But let them go to the doctor. That's where drugs belong. If it's a supplement, then it's a supplement, but I don't really think it is. And it has some long-term problems. Recurring strokes, um, sometimes for fairly young people is mentioned in here too. It's not all good. The money sounds pretty good to me, but it sounds good to the cartels too. And if we want to be part of that, we were with, we did the same thing with gambling. We voted it in because the cartels and the, and the gangs were getting it. So we said, why don't we get it? Everybody's going to do it anyway. But in this case, we're building schools, we're paying a fortune for them, we're educating these children, and then we're sending them out in the world with marijuana. Their hippocampus gets smaller as they age, taking marijuana, other things happen to them as well. And I just don't feel it's a good idea to do this, at least as a minimum. Please ask the board of health or some medical authority for more information on this, for their approval of it, whatever. If, if the board of health approves of it, even though they're appointed by local government, um, what are we going to say? Really? Uh, they, they pretty well can control anything they want, the board of health. So it's just, my thought is that, uh, as a drug, treat it that way. The other part of it is, if it's still illegal federally and somebody buys it here and we've approved it, isn't there some smart lawyer, and not to say anything against the other lawyers here? Yeah. And maybe some smart lawyer will say, oh, they bought that in West Springfield and had an accident in Connecticut? And we're going to sue the town for allowing it because it's against federal law. Yes?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
You haven't seen it.
Well.
You haven't seen that stuff.
Let him finish.
And so anyway, that's, uh, you know, Will says no. But yeah, you think you're going to get away with it, but then a smart lawyer comes along and proves that there was a negligence among the town, having known or even not even looked into the, uh, the medical problems that come about and selling it to these people. Also, what happened to secondhand smoke? Um, what happened to these, these kids that sit around where all the smoking is going on of the marijuana? It's not all smoke anymore. There's a lot of stuff that's, uh, internal. But secondhand smoke can reach the children. What happened to pregnant women that have been very much known to have children that have deficit problem in their intelligence because their mothers took marijuana? And the marijuana seems to be more concentrated than it used to be back in the sixties and seventies. The sixties and seventies, it was a weed you could get out of the ground. Now it's all concentrated into some, some kind of candy or whatever. Okay, if you want these copies, I'd.
Yeah, just give, uh, give them to Allison, please. Thank you. Anybody else? Name and address for the record, please.
Linda Perrin, eleven Belmont Avenue in West Springfield. I mean, I'd like to say, everybody should go read what the CDC says about drugs, but that's not why I'm here. And I'm older than everybody who's sitting up there, so I don't have any problem saying that either. And I don't know anybody who uses marijuana. But why are we having an ordinance before the city council has approved marijuana at all? And I think we're putting the cart before the horse. I don't know, that's just my opinion.
Say that, I'm sorry, say that again?
We don't have approval for the use of marijuana in town. So why are we coming to the planning board before the city council or the voters take a stand on this? And I don't consider a thousand people surveyed, and I did answer the survey, out of twenty-eight thousand residents as a good sampling. So I think we should have the town revote. Do you want to have marijuana? And just because we call it marijuana, we call it cannabis, it's still a drug. And like my mother used to say, if everybody drumps off the North End Bridge, are you going with them? And I think that's where we're going.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Mark Lichwan. I live on one twenty-eight Hillcrest in Westfield, but I own a couple of businesses in West Springfield, Mass. And of course, I own some property in West Springfield, Mass. I am a principal in Cannabis Connection of Westfield. And just wanted to put a couple of questions, like Bev had some concerns about the children and things of this nature. What we have found through the state regulations, we've been in business, this June will be two years in business in Westfield. We have found is, this business is extremely regulated by the state. We've got over forty cameras on the property. We've actually monitored our cameras all the time. This police monitor cameras also, looking for people in the parking lot. If anybody's loitering in our parking lot, things of this nature, it doesn't happen. Uh, one thing about the kids is, the kids have no access to our building. We have the most sophisticated scanning machines for IDs. And like the mayor had said, to come into our building, you're locked into a sal, you walk in, it's a locked Sally Port. You go to our person, they take your ID, they go ahead and scan it through our machine. If it says it's real and you're twenty-one years old, you're offered in. And then you go in, it looks much like a retail shop, which any of you guys are invited to come to our store at any time. We can show you the front and back operations of our operation. And literally get a better sense for what we do. We have an associate come over and kind of ask you, because some people don't have any idea what kind of products they're looking for, what their problems are. What we've been finding is, the younger population is not a, at all, twenty-one year olds, we'll say it's probably thirty years or above is who our average consumer is. And why is that? Well, number one, our product, products are not, uh, inexpensive. The reason being is the state, when you had all the local option tax, you had everything else. It's about twenty percent tax additional to this. So the younger generation, one of the people most concerned about, they buy black market, they buy from the streets. Why? Because they don't pay that tax. What concerns us the most about that is now more than ever, you're hearing about fentanyl is getting put in everything. Back in the day, you used to have marijuana where, okay, you didn't have problems with fentanyl. Now you're hearing these stories, well, they're putting fentanyl in. What we can tell you about our products are, they're made in Massachusetts by Massachusetts mandate. Nothing can come over federal lines, so everything has to be produced in Massachusetts. It's tested for lead, it's tested for all sorts of contaminants, it's tested for, uh, any kind of pesticide, just things of this nature. And it's not about smoking anymore, because you're right, smoking is kind of sometimes a flower, that's what it's called, smoking. Yeah, some people like that, but a lot of people will like to take an edible. And what we're finding is, we're getting a lot of the older crowd is coming in because they can't sleep. People can't sleep. They make a product called the Bedtime Betty. It's a very low dose and has melatonin in there. Take it about an hour before you go to sleep and you can actually sleep very well. Frank's talking about a hand cream we have on, I didn't believe either. My hands because of arthritis, I rub it on there. Do I think it solves the problem? No, but it definitely numbs it out type of scenario. So, uh, as far as five hundred feet from schools, that's kind of what all the towns have been using. There's no school kids around our buildings, period. And what I can tell you, what's most important, what we've been finding after two years, is you have to be in a competitive location. Back in the day, when we'll say Neta or the other players were out there, you could put them anywhere and people would drive to them. They'll actually go and drive them. Now we're finding it's a much more retail situation. All the towns eventually will allow this to happen because, and most of the states will probably allow this to happen. And what we're finding is, no matter who's awarded, if it happens in West Springfield, you got to put them in a, in a competitive spot. Because I'll tell you, Insa, right, the Luxburger, that has stopped a lot of traffic to our store. And I'll tell you why. People from Connecticut are coming up across the border. And, uh, they're just traveling to the closest location to get the products they're looking for and they're going right back across the border type of scenario. So if it is going to come to pass in West Springfield, I would definitely encourage you to put it in places like Riverdale Road, some of your better spots, because you're a hundred percent right. This is the wagon wheel of West Springfield. I grew up in West Springfield, it's the wagon wheel of West Springfield. And that'll give whoever it is a competitive, uh, at least to sustain them. Eventually, what I think is going to happen, it's going to be like having some liquor stores in town. It's going to, you're going to have four of them, six of them, whatever you're going to have to, you have to decide how many you need. you have to decide how many you need. And it's eventually what it's gonna be like is having a liquor store. Because if all the towns have them, we'll say Agawam blows it and does it, what's gonna motivate someone from Agawam to come over to West Springfield type of scenario? So, you know, but West Springfield has, you, the dynamic of, with all the three major roads coming together, it gives you a pretty good dynamic to make some, to make some dollars. And beyond dollars, it's very, you'd be surprised. And we encourage you to come up. If you ever want to come up, come up to our location, let us know you're coming, and come take a look at the location. We encourage, we want, we want to be open, we want the business to be open while you're there, because we want you to see inside who you see walking through the doors. And you're gonna be very surprised. Yeah?
I'm sorry, is it Mark?
Mark, yep.
Mark. I guess the way I'm understanding this is, do you grow at your facility? Or can, maybe I'm gonna ask you a couple of questions and you can explain. Do you grow at your facility?
So our facility is, we are strictly buying wholesale.
Okay.
From suppliers in Massachusetts. They have to be Massachusetts suppliers, and we sell retail. So we're a lot like a liquor store, we're buying wholesale, we're selling, we're selling retail. Some places, back in the, the mayor was right, back when, when it was medical only, you had to be fully integrated, which means you had to have your own growth. Like Affinity is one of the ones in West Springfield, they had to grow their own product and sell their own product in the beginning. That law, those laws have changed, so at this point, no, we're actually pulling in from vendors, 40 different vendors in the state, maybe more. My partner Kurt knows the exact numbers, and we're offering a variety of different products. Some people like the way this gummy bear tastes, some people want a microdose, which means I don't want to feel any kind of effect of high at all, I just want to take the edge off. A lot of people are using it for anxiety, but the answer to your question, no, it's wholesale to retail for us.
And I just have one more question. You know, maybe this is because I, when I was out in Denver, it seemed like there were all these little mom and pop shops that were very small retail stores. And I guess in my head, that's what I'm thinking, is that these are gonna be stores like along Main Street or Elm Street. But that's not, is that not the type of facility that you're suggesting or?
What we have found is the key important thing is to have ample parking, wherever you put them, you have to have parking. Neta had a nightmare going on because they were up, they were, of course, they were always the busiest, they were the first people on the block, and it really, they needed police presence to go ahead and keep North Hampton flowing. Our location in Westfield, we have an ample parking lot, and so you usually have no lines, no waiting with us at all, so I think it's important there. I, it's like Will, like the mayor had said, is it's too expensive to get into this industry to just to have the small, I'm not saying eventually, it was like beer and wine, well now convenience stores are selling beer and wine, much to just grant at the liquor stores, you know, that's all up to you guys down the road if that ever happens. But right now, the licensing alone to get through the Cannabis Control Commission, and the Cannabis Control Commission is very real, we just got an unexpected visit the other day, and it was only because one of our associates didn't have the right paperwork or whatever, so they came in unannounced or whatever, and they go through this place, top to bottom type of scenario. So very regulated, and they're very real. And so we've had no police presence, I take that back, we had one person, we had to call the police because he kept deciding to eat the flower instead of smoking it, and he said he, our cannabis had no THC in it. And we said, well, you can't just eat flowers, it's not meant like that, you have an edible. He goes, well, the deer get high. This is the person we're dealing with. We said, we don't have to tell you, sir, and the police removed them. But other than that, the Westfield police have had no response, and that goes back to the community impact fee. They're trying to figure out if there is an impact. And a lot of towns haven't seen much of an impact. So it's hard to go ahead and say, I'm gonna take the community impact dollars if there is no impact. So Attorney General, that's all being sorted out, but the op, option tax, like we're talking about, that is a very real thing.
And you don't have to share this information if you don't want to. Do you guys break out how many non-Westfield residents come through that place?
We definitely have software that doesn't take, that doesn't keep their names, but we can tell where they came from, yes.
Like you have some sort, again, you don't have to tell us, you don't want to share it, but I'm just curious, how many people come from other towns and go into your, is there a percentage? Is it?
Do you know Kurt?
No? Okay, that's fine. Go ahead.
You were stating about how when they go in, they have to scan the license, make sure it's real. Do you just buy the scanner, or is that something that the state says you have to buy a certain one? Or do you just get to go and buy any scanner?
We, we buy it, but is the state mandating which one? It's an accessory, actually. So actually, we bought a $3,500 one, so it wasn't mandated, but they do check, there's, there's, you have to go through training on how to look for IDs and things of this nature.
Thank you.
Can I follow up on that?
Yep.
You buy the actual tool, but it must go into a database to see if the license is real or not? No? I mean...
I'll let Kurt do some talking. Kurt's an active member up there all the time, he can, you can answer any questions about the industry. I just, he didn't want to come up here and talk.
Well, you are now. Name an address.
Kirk is Otis again, 42 Gary Drive, Westfield. So with the ID scanner, we have a very sophisticated ID scanner. We don't need it, we decided to do it. As long as people are 21 and our staff is trained on how to check an ID, we could check an ID just like a package store. But we wanted to be extra safe, so we get a Veriscan ID where we put it in, it scans the barcode, it comes up with a red X, meaning you're not 21, or a big green check that says you're 21. It does store the data. So we could pull the data from Agawam, West Springfield, Springfield, Hoyoke, any other community, and I could just total everything up and see where, where our patrons are coming from. So it is in, it is stored data, I just haven't pulled the data. But there is, I would say, I believe we did the math, it's like 65% of the people are from our community, so 35% is coming from other communities, which is a lot. So other communities, we welcome everybody, because that's how we're making business, but other communities are losing revenues for sure. But I was going to say something, because every time I come to one of these public hearings, somebody gets up and they talk about the children and the drugs and drug abuse and gateway drug and so on and so forth. I got into this business seven years ago. I was a firefighter in Westfield for 33 years. The opiate addictions that our kids suffer from is unbelievable. I was administering Narcan three times a night, waking up children who overdosed on narcotics. And it started happening to my kids, my friends' kids. I'd go on Christmas Eve, a friend of, one of my best friend's sons overdosed. We saved them on Christmas Eve. It was happening non-stop. Well, then I started to research, what is getting our kids off of pills and pharmaceuticals and booze? There wasn't a lot of resources. Our addiction centers were overfilled. However, me and a couple doctors got together, because the studies are showing that cannabis relieves symptoms of withdrawal of alcohol and opiates and other drugs. However, the stigma of years past where I'm a junkie, I can't even smoke marijuana, so I'm gonna sit there and shake and twitch on a couch for 30 days, people couldn't do it. It was too hard for them. So now when they introduce marijuana and they could take a marijuana pill, or do a gummy, or a little piece of chocolate, or a little drink, when their symptoms arise and they start shaking and twitching because they're addicted to booze or alcohol, or opiates, they take a gummy. They drink a drink, they settle down. They can get through that 30 days. They can get rid of the addiction that they're suffering from. Doctors are now calling it an exit drug. Cannabis is an exit drug, it's getting people off of the hard stuff. I raised three kids. I didn't want any of my kids doing any drugs, including cannabis. I was anti-drug my entire life, and then I realized that cannabis was helping people get off the hardcore drugs. I got into it for the medical side of cannabis. Then recreational got voted in, we had to keep up with the Joneses, if we just opened a medical facility like Affinity did, it's tough to stay open. So we got into the recreational market just to keep our doors open and to try to get ourselves revenues to pay for our, our upfront expenses, which is millions of dollars. So again, when people get up and say, we don't want our kids on drugs, they're really bad, I agree 1,000%. I want them off of drugs. How do you get off of hard drugs? This helps. And to go to a doctor and say, go to a doctor and get a medical card. I have my medical card. When I retired from the firehouse, I had insomnia because of my shift schedule, I couldn't sleep. Mass General threw me on all sorts of medications to put, to put me to sleep. I ended up having a hard time getting off of those medications. I do one gummy a night, I sleep through the night, no more pharmaceuticals. I got rid of the pharmaceutical companies, and now I just do one gummy a night, it puts me to sleep. So that's my story. I didn't get into it to sell drugs and to get everybody stoned in town. I got in to help people get off of harder drugs and to help people that are my age and sleep, anxiety. Nobody wants to see stoners ripping bongs in Staley Park. No one wants to see that. But I do like when older people come in to me and say, Kurt, I couldn't sleep, I got these gummies, I ha, I haven't had a good night's sleep in 10 years, but now I can finally sleep, thank you very much. That's what I'm in the business for. So if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Going once? Going twice? Gone. You guys got any more? Close the public hearing, yeah.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Closed. Allison, what do we got from the town departments?
Didn't get any comments from the town departments.
No comments from the, not even the health department? So just to, just to emphasize, we've got no positive or negative comments from police, fire, health. So again, complete, in my opinion, completely different than several years ago, but... I mean, we can still talk, or?
No, good.
Move to favorably recommend the zoning ordinance amendment to the following sections of the zoning ordinance, section 302.1, terms defined by amending and adding definitions related to the medical and adult use of marijuana, section 305.3, table 5-2, table of use regulations, business districts, and table 5-3, table of use regulations, industrial districts, by adding the use marijuana retail store as allowed by planning board special permit in the business A, business B, industrial, industrial park, and industrial park light zoning districts, and adding the use marijuana production facility as allowed by planning board special permit in the business B, business B1, and industrial zoning districts. Section 308.8, registered marijuana dispensaries and off-site medical marijuana dispensaries, and section 308.10, non-medical marijuana establishments by deleting and replacing with a new section titled section 308.8, marijuana uses, including regulations for the medical and adult use of marijuana.
Second.
Any discussion? I, I just want to clarify for anybody here in the audience that we are only making a recommendation to the city council. What, what happens here tonight is not the end of the world. If you want to speak negatively or positively, you have another shot at the council, they have the final decision. Kind of to answer one of the members in the audience's question is, the reason it comes here first is, we're, we're tasked to do our research and give people an opportunity to come up and speak, and then we make a recommendation based on what we researched and what we heard here. But it is definitely not a, a done deal tonight, it's just a step in the process. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Favorable recommendation to the city council. Okay, minutes from May 18th. You're welcome.
Move to approve the minutes of May 18th planning board meeting as prepared.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Approved. We got an approval not required, Allison.
Yeah, so before I explain this, I just want to ask the board if you prefer me to sign on your behalf, rather than you all having to line up and individually sign. I do have the ability to do that.
That makes a lot of sense.
Sure. So I'll, we'll do that moving forward.
But do we still have to?
You still have to vote, yeah. You still, you're still the approving body, but I have signatory authorization to, to sign on your behalf. So, this plan is to just move a property line between two existing properties. One is 476 Main Street, the other is 16 Hill Street. It leaves both properties with more than adequate frontage. Yes, absolutely, please, please do. So this sliver here is being transferred from back here to this part.
Do I still get to have my name on the top? Just kidding.
I can write Jan if you want.
I'm good. Anybody want to see it? All set? All those in favor?
No, no.
Oh, wait. Move to endorse. It's the favor of what, right?
Why not? Sure. Move to endorse the plan and find that it does not constitute a subdivision because it shows a conveyance of land that changes the shape of existing lots, with each affected lot being left with more than the required frontage.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Approved? With Allison doing the signatures. Action items? Nothing?
Yes, sorry. We've been trying to do board reorganization all year and haven't had a full board. We still don't, but if...[1745.83]